Okay, everybody, it's six P M. Let's get the show rolling.
All right.
Thank you.
So I appreciate it.
Welcome, everyone, to night two of budget presentation for fiscal year twenty twenty. We went around and introduced everybody last night, so let's skip that part tonight, and I'm gonna hand it right back over to David.
Thank you. Thanks for persevering for night two. First thing is a little housekeeping. We had a comment that it would be good if you're going, if you're somewhere near a microphone, to use it, or to make sure you kind of speak into it for the benefit of the people at home. We obviously don't have enough for everybody, but we do tonight, because not everybody is here. So if you just make sure you have a microphone somewhere near you if you're gonna talk, that's great. Welcome, Robin. So we're going to halfway through our budgets, start at the front, or start at the beginning. A great place to start with administration and finance, which is, begins on page four of the budget. And we're still working from the draft of February eleventh, two thousand nineteen. I see that most people are there and ready. So start off, administration and finance are the four full-time people that work in the town office and one part-time, primarily the people you see when you come in to do your business and me hiding them back. As we discussed briefly last night, and I'll hit again on this, in terms of the wages, Carrie, there's a breakdown of wages for fiscal year twenty in the middle of the page. But what's happened is the, we have one employee that's eligible for a step increase, the finance director's going from step two to three, and all the other wages are adjusted, with the exception of the town administrator's wage, by two point eight percent for the cost of, a cost of living increase. We've also, you'll note that two point eight percent doesn't equal four point three. The four point three includes the fifty-third week. So if you'll note in the rated, in the middle of the pages where it has the wages, we have fiscal year twenty in the subtotal, and then the fifty-third pay week to make the total total. And then next year, you won't see a fifty-third pay week there.
Okay.
Yeah?
Just, how many steps are there?
Um, we start with step H, which, this was created prior to my arrival, which was a hire. We have five steps after that, that you need to have both time and service and merit for performance, and then two additional. So we have eight steps. The first, if you get hired in step H, if you were new and didn't have any experience, and you can move up a step a year till you get to step five, and then it's five years before you'd get the next step, and then it's ten years after that before you would go to step seven. The selectmen are allowed to make midterm adjustments, I guess, if they so deemed fit. Uh, it's trying, it was trying, when it was developed, to recognize that if you started off and you had no municipal experience, you obviously learn your job faster in the first couple of years to try to bring you up and recognize your knowledge, skills, and experience with the town, and then, not that you don't learn something new every day, because after twenty-nine years of working for municipal government, I still learn something new almost every day, but you kind of...
Flat towel.
Flat towel, that's a good way to put it in, you know, in a sense.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The, uh, so FICR Medicare is the same percentage like, tonight as it was last night, and been for a long time. Retirement, we offer full-time employees a retirement plan through the International County and City Management Association. It's a matching program where the town will match an employee dollar for dollar up to six and a half percent of your wages, your base wage. So if you work overtime, you don't get to match that. Medical and dental insurance, we offer medical and dental plans to, again, full-time employees. We also have a buyout, so that if you have insurance elsewhere, um, the personnel policy says you can get one-half of the town share of a single coverage, or employee coverage. And the percentages vary by your hire date. The board, a number of years ago, changed the policy so that new hires get, pay a greater percentage of their insurances. Running quickly down here, memberships, we've taken the memberships, this used to be, excuse me, if you look back for past years, things like I belong to the Main Town and City Clerks Association, and some of the others belong to Treasurer's Association. We lumped those down with, there's another line, a few, five or six lines down called town memberships, where the town actually belongs to, like, the main municipal association, and we'll get to those in a minute. But rather than having two lines that had, you know, bits of money, we lump them together when we, in our accounting system anyway, so we just put them all in one. Advertising is public hearing notices, bid notices, if we have employee recruitment, anything we advertise in the newspaper. Audit is an estimate for our audit services. We're required by statute to have an independent audit done annually. Excuse me, we just got our la, our fiscal year eighteen audit, eighteen? Yeah, eighteen, audit Monday to Friday.
Friday.
Friday af, Friday afternoon, the board just got it on, on Monday. We got an electronic copy today, so if anybody wants to read it over, it'll be online soon. Leans and discharges, for people that don't pay their taxes on a timely basis, the town files leans with the Registry of Deeds. There's a cost to do that. The lien costs are recouped when people actually pay their taxes. And the discharges, we issue a discharge that gets recorded in the Registry of Deeds. There's a cost with that, that's also recouped from the taxpayer, but we need to have an expense line somewhere for that money if we have to pay for the Registry of Deeds. Postage, pretty self-explanatory. Professional development, we do offer professional development or training to the various employees. It's a training budget. Town memberships, we belong to the main municipal association, the Midcoast Regional Planning Commission, ICMA Retirement Corporation, the Midcoast Economic Development District, and then the various organizations that the employees belong to for training, whether it's ICMA Manager, Main Town and City Management, Tax Collectors and Treasurer's Association. Printing is, I'll remind you, if I'm going too fast, somebody speak up. If I'm not going fast enough, somebody speak up. If I'm going into too much detail, holler. Printing, we do things like printing ballots, town reports, tax bills, checks. Oh, we got a check for free, thanks to Kayla now. We found out our bank was charging us and giving some clients free checks, so we, no, not we, Kayla said, "What's the deal with that?" And they gave us free checks, as they should. And the various forms and whatever else that we have printing. Tax maps, we have an annual update to our tax maps for splits of properties. The assessor's agent draws them on a map, and we send them out to the mapping company to make the changes. Computer purchases, we have ten workstations. We try to replace two workstations a year, so we're replacing, so we keep computers average about five years. Hardware purchases are our backup tapes, our uninterrupted power supplies, printers, anything of that sort. Computer support, we have outside I T. We don't have anybody in-house that, we're all good at various things, but none of us are...
Experts.
Experts at computers by any stretch, so. Software licensing, we pay a licensing fee to run our municipal software to what's called the Trio System through Harris Computer. Everything from car registrations to dog licenses, anything you do at the front counter, pretty much runs through Trio, our payroll, all Software is our antivirus and GoToMyPC, so we can, can be accessed remotely. Records maintenance, we have records that we keep in perpetuity. We try to send out some of those on an annual basis to get them preserved, so that when somebody wants to look at them well into the future, they actually have something to look at, where versus a book that you open up doesn't have any information in it, doesn't do anybody much good.
What's that process?
The process for the records, depending on what record we have, like the commitment book, that gets printed off and gets sent and bound by, I don't know what the company is, but I guess it doesn't matter.
Profile?
And then, and then we take that, yeah, we take that down, put it in the vault next to all the other bound commitment books, and I wouldn't say it was frequently looked at, but occasionally somebody will research properties back. They wanna know when the house was built, and you can come in and you can trace your property back through the commitments, through the land and the building values, and you go until you find like, you know, a year when it had land but no building, and you say, "Okay, my house was built in eighteen fifty-four." Woo-hoo! And that's a process. For some of them, some of the other ones, the clerks' books, they actually put in some sort of acid protective cover. We follow, the main state archivist has a recommended procedure, and also they publish a list on how long we have to keep some of these things. So some of our records, we don't keep forever. We'd be inundated with paper, but the ones we do, we do that way. We just, we bind it, usually they ship us a box and we bind it and ship it off to whatever company that does it, and then they ship it back and you slide it in the slot in the vault. Karen, Karen's a good person for that. Hopefully I gave you enough information.
Is the vault here, or?
Yeah, we have a vault in the basement.
Oh, okay.
Where certain things, what's that?
All the gold bars are there?
Yeah, all the gold bars.
They decide who sell out.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, yeah. If you wanna see it sometime, we'll take you down. It's kind of a, little bit of a mess, but it looks like a bank vault. Doesn't have any money in it, though, but. Um, let's see, so where was I? Copier lease, we have one photocopy here in the town office. We lease that. We get a certain number of copies included in the lease. The next line is a copy or overage, because we can always go over a little bit, and so we have to pay the, pay per copy after, after our allowance. We kind of fashion the allowance based on our past history, and a little bit less, because we didn't wanna pay for copies we weren't making, so, pretty close. Supplies, our general office supplies for all the administrative offices, whether it be, you know, photocopy paper, or pens, or notebooks. You will note that, we talked about just briefly last night, the fact that we no longer assign a hundred dollars to the budget committee and a hundred dollars to the Board of Appeals. We've just taken those, made them zero, and put them in this, and that way we're not trying to track how many notebooks we've given everybody. Hopefully, we're not gonna be in trouble.
Pieces of paper.
Hopefully, we're not gonna be in trouble for doing that. Travel, we reimburse employees for personal use of their vehicles at the IRS mileage rate. Things like if you go to class for training, if you're driving to the bank, because we make routine deposits, almost daily, of money. And then cellphone, if you wanna save, what, how much is that?
Seven hundred dollars.
Seven hundred dollars?
No, no.
You can cross that line right off. I say this every year, and they say no. That provides the town administrator with a cellphone, so he can't run and hide no matter much, how much he wants to.
Not gonna happen.
Not crossing that off.
Where's their, is there a budget item for what we, the town pays to the county?
No. County budget is done by the Waldo County Budget Committee, of which Selectman Garrettson was a member this past year, and the Waldo County Commissioners. We get that as an assessment. We don't get a choice as to whether or not we pay it or we don't pay it, and when the Board of Assessors, also the selectmen do the tax commitment in August, it's just a line on the form, and we just fill in the number that the county treasurer has told us we owe. In our case, it's a little over eight hundred thousand, or last, the year we're in now, no, two thousand eighteen, sorry, they run on the calendar year, we run on fiscal year. Lincolnville paid a little over eight hundred thousand dollars.
So that's excluded from the budget view that we have?
Correct. That's, that's like, well, you're gonna see the school budget eventually, but the selectmen don't have any jurisdiction over that, and the bill comes in and they just, it gets added to the commitment.
And the same for the high school?
Same for the, well, yes, yeah, well, yeah, the selectmen don't oversee that budget. We do get a bill, at least on the high school, you get a chance to go to the budget meeting and contribute, but you won't get a, you won't have a presentation in here unless we invite them to come.
Mm-huh.
But we can let you know when those meetings are.
No, I was just curious.
Actually, I think those meetings are on your, you all received a list, right, of all the various, it's under timelines and meetings?
Yeah.
Garrett's got it in his hand. I think the C S D budget meeting is listed on that.
March twenty-seventh.
And then the, the real one, where they actually make the decisions, is in mid-May? Mid to late May?
Yeah, May twenty-first.
May twenty-first. That's the one where it's very similar to a town meeting, where somebody will read the article, and somebody will move an amount, and then they'll have discussion. If you think our town meeting moves quickly, you should go to the C S D budget meeting.
Is there a representative from the town of Lincolnville on that budget committee?
Uh, there's two rep, the C S D does not have a budget committee. They have just their school board.
Okay.
Uh, there are two representatives from Lincolnville, Dave Perkins and Andrea Police, who was here last night, was elected last June, I think in June, to the C S D board. I'll digress, I think. Does anybody have a question? Boy, I burned through administration and finance pretty quickly. Not a, not a lot of change. Turning the page then to protection, animal control, with the exception of a, the two point eight percent change to the stipend, and increasing the mileage, I won't say allowance, the mile, the money for reimbursement on the mileage, everything for animal control is proposed to stay the same. We are required to have a shelter where we take stray animals. We choose to contract with the Paws in Camden. For those, that's included in animal control. The board did have some discussions earlier, and they may have some as we move forward about a deputy or part-time or assistant A C O, but they haven't got that far, and so, so far, it's me.
You do a great job.
I do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just curious, the increase in the request for miles?
Um, that's primarily due to a couple factors. Mileage rate's gone up slightly, and we already expended two hundred fifty-one dollars through the half-year, and...
So you're thinking?
Past, you know, it's like investments past performance is no indication of the future, whatever, but it's as good a number as any. I mean, a year ago, we spent two hundred and sixteen dollars for the whole year. In the half-year, we've gone two fifty-one. So it's, it all depends on what the calls are. Animal control officer primarily tries to address it via telephone, if possible, but if not, and she has to transport something to Paws.
Yep.
We pay her.
And there's, I know we had, at one point, had conversation about an assistant of some sort or another, but that wasn't discussed seriously enough to include here, besides your assistance.
I, I, we, we got you some information that you had in a packet, a couple packets ago, just that had some, what other towns were doing. Some have them, some don't. It's only a problem when we need one, and ours is gone, and then it's me, and I didn't think it was worthwhile caring, but if you wanted to add something in, we'll allow that.
Okay.
And then seek one.
Okay.
A lot of towns actually pay their substitute out of the primary salary.
Hmm.
So if they aren't able to make the call, then, okay, you lost fifty dollars to that call or something.
Yeah.
There's a lot, there's different pay schemes, I shouldn't call them schemes, but pay schemes out there for A C O. Some, some places pay, you know, a fixed rate for the year, then hourly, so kind of to have you on call, they give you five hundred dollars, but every time you go, they pay you twenty-five per hour, just making those numbers up. Some pa, sometimes do what we do with stipend, sometimes just do hourly. It all depends on who you can find, and what they're willing to do, and what you're willing to pay, I think.
Okay.
Any questions on A C O? If not, I'm gonna turn the page and go to page seven for parking enforcement. I'm gonna be ahead of schedule here. For the last couple of years, we've had a parking officer or a parking attendant. This year, we actually hired one and had one part, very part-time, which, depending on who you talk to, may or may not have corrected every problem. Sure, it didn't correct every problem, but we had substantially more hours assigned to that position last year. We weren't able, one, to fill the position completely last year, and it seemed like once we got a handle on moving some of the repeat offenders along early in the season, that the need for enforcement diminished somewhat, so I took the liberty of downing the, or lowering the request, because I pay somebody for something we weren't gonna necessarily use them.
What's a, how much income from parking stations?
Do you know that? Not a lot.
Not a whole lot. I think we maybe wrote twenty or thirty tickets, and I think they're ten dollars apiece.
Yeah, okay.
And if they don't pay it, then they dabble, but...
We, primarily, we seek to have voluntary compliance, and usually, people get, first time offenders usually get a warning card. The parking attendants have been pretty good about identifying who the repeat offenders are, and, you know, after the first time, you may end up with one of those tickets, or if you're parked in a handicap spot, or disabled parking, and you shouldn't be there, you don't get much of a warning, you get scratched one.
So, um, so we brought it down here. Could we have used the parking attendant more if they were, if they were more available? Do you think, would that have been helpful?
There certainly were times when the parking attendant wasn't available to us, that we had. As you can see, the request is still substantially lower than what we expended for half the year. But it wasn't an overwhelming, I, I don't know, as I would say, to look, to say that one person's going to fill the ten weeks, seven days a week, four hours a day. I think that was how we came up with the, I know that's how we came up with the number, but whether or not we divvied that up between one or two, or, I doubt we would want three people, but we could conceivably break that up amongst a number of people. It's only a problem when it's a problem. I, I don't know how to really answer completely the question.
Okay.
We're never, never going to have enough people for twenty-four, seven, and if the parking problem comes in on a Saturday afternoon, we may not have somebody available. But by Sunday morning, the problem's usually solved, because people leave.
Thank you.
Yeah, I danced around that one, not very well either. Any other questions on parking enforcement?
Just, I guess I'm just looking at the math for, nineteen budget was sixty-seven hundred dollars and change, and we only expended a thousand and eighteen.
Yep.
I mean, that seems like a pretty large gap. And I know if you look at your math below, they do the hour that you anticipated, it comes out to the forty-three and change.
Yeah.
Is that because of the unavailability of the person?
Well, there was a coup, I think there was a couple reasons. To hire part-time help in the middle of the summer was, let's just say, challenging, and of course, the budget year starts July one, so until the money was really approved, and we knew it was gonna be approved in June, to find somebody, and then we've only gone half-year, so I would anticipate that the person will hopefully return to our employ, well, she's still employed, she's just not doing much for us. We'll come back in May. The problem seems to arise, particularly at the beach, when the state starts charging to be in the state parking lot for the ferry. It just automatically migrates over to the town parking lot, and once you get the message out that, hey, we're enforcing parking with the warning cards or a ticket, those people either pay for parking or find some out, someplace else to park. So I can see that that, we'll see another expense in the spring, maybe not double what we've already expended, but additional expense, and then it would be handy to have more than one person, and I think if we actually seek somebody earlier on in the season, perhaps we can find another willing participant to be parking enforcement for times when our current one wasn't available to us.
How much do they charge at the pier, at the ferry?
I think it's ten dollars a day.
Yeah. So it's a deterrent then? It's not like people just pay the ten dollar fine for us, it's?
Well, some people do, but it's ten dollars the first time, but when you get your second ticket, it keep...
Escalates up.
Yeah.
And when does the state start charging?
I think it's around, around the first of May, but don't hold me to that date.
Okay.
We can find out.
It's right around there, yeah.
Yeah. It may be mid-May, but at some point in May, and they charge through Oc, end of October, I believe. And by that point, our parking problems seem to be pretty well diminished. Other parking, all right, I'm turning the page. Oh, where's the chief?
About two minutes early from when I told you to be here.
Oh, all right, I'm gonna turn a couple pages then, and continue on, on page ten. We'll do protection other, because the fire chief isn't here, because we are ahead of, we are ahead of schedule. Protection other, streetlights, we have streetlights that we lease from Central Main Power. We have sidewalk lights at the beach. We've reduced the request for funds somewhat, because we're anticipating a reduction in electricity usage with the L E D streetlights at the, sidewalk lights at the beach that we don't yet have. Insurances, we participate with the main municipal association, risk management for workers' compensation, unemployment insurance, our risk pool, which is our building liability insurances, our vehicle liability insurances, our, our public officials' liability insurance, all our insurances. And then miscellaneous deductible... And then, um, miscellaneous deductible for our building policies and our vehicles. We have a thousand dollar deductible. We don't, we hope we don't use it, but if we need the money, we budget for one instance in the course of the year.
Insurance went down, that's odd.
The unemployment insurance, um, we have been paying in it for so long, we actually get money back from it.
Okay.
But potentially depending on what happens with claims and everything, we potentially could owe something. So we reduced it some because we have been actually getting paid from them instead of paying them.
Uh, much to the chagrin of Kayla when she first started doing some budget stuff. I put the budget for legal back up to what we currently have, um, for a couple of reasons. One, our legal fees will be increasing in the coming year as of January first, two thousand twenty. Um, plus, we never know what's coming down, what's coming to us in terms of land use violations or other legal matters. Uh, we will likely have on the town meeting warrant, um, a question to regarding clearing the, or quiet, doing a quiet title action on a property that the town acquired an interest in for non-payment of taxes. Excuse me. And, uh, those are pretty pricey, but it secures our interest in that property and gives us a better marketable title, uh, to the property. Do you remember what we paid for the Warden Road one that you looked up?
It was, I think, three or four thousand.
Yeah, it's at least that.
For all of the research and everything.
And that was years, a couple of years ago. So anyhow, thirty thousand dollars.
So with legal services, uh, anytime you request a phone call or a meeting with, with them, that's just, that's just included i- in this price?
No, we, we pay by the hour. So if we don't use legal services, we don't pay. Um, but sure as I'm sitting here, we will. And.
No, they open up to the, like, become go and retainer, it might be cheaper in the long run.
Um.
That way, if you need to call a two-minute phone call, you're not gonna have to bill a couple hundred dollars.
Yeah, we don't, well, we don't give up a couple hundred dollars for a two-minute phone call. But, um, there have been, uh, I know Rockport did a, um, uh, different method of securing legal services, um, where they have pretty much defined these things are included in, in what you're gonna advise us for, for the year at this price. And things that aren't on that list is a separate fee. Um, it's just a different way to go about it, but we've nev- we've never approached it that way. We've started the meter when the meters started with our issue and when we stopped, they stopped.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, emergency management, currently we're without an emergency management director. Um, when the fire chief, um, Steve Gibbons, uh, was our emergency management director, he is no longer the fire chief by choice. And the new fire chief, hopefully he's gonna show up here at some point. Um, the new fire chief wasn't necessarily interested in being emergency management director. So if there's somebody in town that wants to step up and do that, we will eventually be advertising that position and seeking a emergency management director. Um, we give that person a small stipend, pay Vicar Medicare on that and have supplies. Good timing, chief.
Late, sorry.
No, that's alright, you're early, but, but we're ahead of time. Uh, ambulance service, uh, we contract with Northeast Mobile Health Services. Um, last year, we were in negotiations and we, we did a one-year contract. The fee was less than what we budgeted. And this year, we anticipate right now that the fee will be what we have for the budget amount, but we have not signed a contract as yet. And then Knox Dispatch, um, we pay Knox County for dispatching ambulance service and fire department. Yeah, that one, if we're gonna have them do it, we're gonna pay the, pay what they owe us.
I was just curious, uh, why do we go through Knox Dispatch instead of Waldo?
We started, oh, about the day I walked in the door, they was having difficulties with, uh, communications, uh, being heard in Lincolnville for, when dispatched from Waldo County. And yet they could, must be have something to do with positioning of the towers, could hear clearly from Knox and switch to have Knox dispatch the fire. And, um, at that same time, at that time, we were served for ambulance with Camden First Aid. And when we made the switch, Knox County recognized that they'd been dispatching Camden First Aid to Lincolnville for a long time for nothing and started charging us to dispatch ambulance too. We can thank Mike Gubli for all that, if he was chief at the time. Um, it was performance. And I think part of it had to do with the way the hills and valleys and mountains are in Lincolnville.
Yeah, okay.
Kinda like cellphone service at my house.
Hmm, interesting.
No more questions on protection other. Uh, I'll introduce everyone to Chief Gibbons, not Chief Gibbons, sorry, Chief Fullington. I was gonna say, Chief Full- Chief Fullington has the, uh, unenviable task, or maybe enviable, of, uh, being a new chief. And Chief Gibbons, a lot, he, he'd been assistant chief or deputy chief for.
For quite a while.
For quite a while.
Quite a while.
Um, so he'd been working his way up from firefighter to assistant chief, deputy chief, and then got tagged to be chief. Uh, so he was a part of putting this budget together, but this budget was, I'm gonna blame on Steve, was primarily.
It's Steve's budget, right, I helped him with it.
Yeah. So, um, with that, I, I don't know if you wanna, I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Fullington.
Um, the budget, we ran over the budget quite a bit last year with truck repairs, not truck maintenance, um, which was a very, not completely unexpected, but we didn't expect to go over as much as we did. Uh, but luckily we have the condension to find and everything else and that seemed to keep us above water for the most part. Um, we did keep the budget for the trucks the same as it was last year cause we don't believe we're gonna have that many repairs this year, um, or in the following years. Um, other than that hiccup, last year, everything stayed about the same, except I think we forgot to add a truck officer last year. So a truck officer was added this year. Um, Steve increased the chief's pay from thirty-one sixty-three to thirty-five.
Wasn't that nice of you?
Yeah.
You get to, you get to defend that, that, that recommendation and.
Yeah, so, um, other than that, I think hose and ladder testing went down, so that's just what they quoted us. That's what we're gonna pay, I believe, for the next three years. And we reduced the building and property maintenance by a thousand dollars.
Why, why was that?
We haven't been using it. Um, this year, we plan on using it a little bit, maybe have somebody clean the building, if there's some mold in the building on it. Um, we have a lot of problems with spiders on the exterior where the lights are, so maybe get a place sprayed so it's not a mess all the time. We're not cleaning spider droppings all off the building all the time. Um, I didn't wanna re- well, Steve and I agreed, we didn't wanna reduce it too much cause we don't really know what it's gonna cost to clean the building.
Also, we pulled the, um, mowing and plowing out of that budget.
Right.
And I think it was a year adjustment of exactly how much we needed to pull out of the.
Okay, okay.
So if you pull the mowing and the plowing out, what's the snow removal?
We pulled it out of maintenance line and put it, put it on some lines.
Yeah, sorry.
Alright. Other than that, I don't think there are any major changes at all. Other than, no wage, no, for the calls. Any questions or anything?
How many calls on average do you do annually?
It varies, I, I mean, sometimes we, we've had, a couple of years, we have a hundred, sometimes we have sixty-five. Um, sometimes it spikes, like this month, we've already had nineteen calls. Hopefully that trend doesn't stay, but, um, it's, it's, I bet we probably average around sixty-five, so, yeah.
It's only cause we have a new chief.
Yeah.
We wanna make sure you're really ready.
Well, let's see, in last, the last town report, they listed eighty-two incidents.
Eighty-two, okay. And that's not all fires, it could be car accidents, that could be assisting northeast ambulance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it could be assisting state police or sheriff's department with some kind of traffic control.
Trees down?
Trees down.
Cat in a tree.
Fire is down.
Hazmat calls like those, I think my third call being chief at the post office.
Yeah, alright.
Is that, what's a hazmat, like, do you have to don the suit and?
Well, yeah, well, we don't do that though, we're not trained for that. So it's basically just assess, assess the situation and, and call.
Secure this.
Call hazmat team from Waldo County and they come check it out.
Holy moly.
Anything else?
No, 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 I think if I remember right, a couple of years ago, when the previous chief, was that Gibbons?
Probably.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, when he started, there was a big boost in some line item.
Truck maintenance.
Truck maintenance, yes, okay.
Yeah, I think we've.
Which, that, that had included ladder te- pump and ladder testing, right? Like, it had been lumped, there'd been several line items that were kinda lumped together that.
Yeah, but if you look back even to FY eighteen, we had a, a very large expense in truck maintenance, nineteen thousand dollars. Um, we had some.
Major repairs done.
Substantial issues that were corrected.
Yeah, yeah.
Just because we, this, that last year was the first year we've ever had the trucks professionally maintained.
Yeah.
So there was a lot of stuff that was wrong, that wasn't per se hindering the truck's performance, but there was a lot of premen- preventative maintenance done so that we don't have any failures when we need the vehicles.
When you get your new Ferrari truck, which I think will be another year or so.
About a year, hopefully.
Will that decrease the maintenance that you'll need going forward or?
Probably for a short period of time. I mean, as everything, you know, a new truck is, is a lot less maintenance, but, you know, the older, then you still have trucks that are still getting older. So you're, you're gonna have more maintenance on the older trucks and less maintenance on the new ones. So the expenses kinda get shuffled around for the most part.
Thanks. Anything else? Okay.
You must be the golden child.
That's all.
Okay.
Well, we had an expense scale last year.
That's your excuse, run it, run it.
Lady, yes.
Lady, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
You asked at the last meeting.
Yep.
For the expenses on the old engine two.
Yes.
I'm still waiting, they're gonna give me an idea of what this new truck could possibly cost to maintain.
Okay.
So once I get that to you, I'll just email it to you.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Send it to me so I can distribute it to all the board.
That's what he meant.
Oh. Well, you know, we gotta make, we gotta make it clear with these new, new people.
Thank you so much.
We get.
Your all set.
No.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Now, we'll s- go to page eleven.
Actually, look at us go.
Which is town office.
I know.
Uh, this is the expenses we have to upkeep and maintain this building. Um, we have a part-time custodian. Although it says zero percent change, we, we will look to increase the part-time wages by the two-point-eight percent, but we didn't see any reason to up the, um, amount in budget because we weren't using what we currently assigned there. So it could absorb the two-point-eight percent within that. Uh, trash removal, we have trash haul and recyclables from here. Uh, landscaping, we contract out landscaping for the town office. Uh, that has an increase obviously shown in that, cause we anticipate an increase potentially. That is bid out on an annual basis. Uh, security system, we have intrusion alarm here as well as, um, smoke and heat detectors. Uh, building maintenance is our various building systems, heating, cooling, water, wastewater, flooring, fire extinguishers, you name it. Electricity is pretty self-explanatory, uh, I hope. Equipment purchases, um, if we need anything, small item, whether it be a new snow shovel or you name it. Um, broom hose, heating fuel, the building is primarily heated with, um, or the new part of the building is primarily heated with heat pumps. Um, we also have for the old portion of the building, a propane boiler in the basement. That also provides backup for this part of the building, uh, via radiant floor. If we have an extended cold snap that the heat pumps can't keep up with that. Um, and the gen- the, we have an emergency generator for the building for power. It's also propane operated or powered or fueled. Uh, supplies, anything from trash bags to toilet paper, to paper towels, to vacuum bag. Well, we don't have vacuum bags, we don't do any. Um, wind decks for cleaning windows, you name it. Uh, telephone, we have five telephone lines coming in the building and one fax line and long-distance charges, charged town office building. Website, internet, um, town has a website as well as internet service. Um, snow removal, used to be in winter road maintenance and last year, we broke those out to be, charge them to the various accounts for a little more clarity for the public. You'll see that that's increased three percent. I think we talked about that last night when Bernard was here, that our winter road or, yeah, winter road maintenance, uh, contract was in our second of five years and has a three percent escalator in that. And live stream and online archive, uh, we did a one-time expense in the current year, so we're not budgeting anything. We're live streaming as we speak. Uh, you can go to the town office website and access archive videos and.
There's no annual free fee.
No annual, right now, there's no annual fee. So that's why it's a big zero.
So I do have a question on the security system.
Yes.
You said that Berg and Fire?
We, yeah, we have.
It is. We have intrusion. Is there, do we have a test and inspect contract or anything like that?
We do not.
Like, like a yearly thing to make sure everything is functioning properly? I might recommend that. The other thing I would like to ask is, are there panic buttons at the station?
They're little.
Yeah.
And they're tied into the.
They're little pull switches underneath the counter.
Yes, yeah, but tied in.
And they're tied into the security system, okay. I might, I might recommend that somebody just ask the question of a test and inspect contract.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just, just to make sure.
When was the last time it was tested and inspected?
Probably when it went in.
Yeah.
We talked about that the other day.
Although, although. If you don't have a contract for that, that would be on a, hey, could you contest this and inspect it? You know, so.
Yep.
You know.
You could always just accidentally have it set off.
Yeah.
Hell, we just figured I'd set this off.
It's a test, it works.
We, we do that from time to time. My daughter would end up doing that one of the transitions.
So that's, that's just, I don't know what that would actually cost or anything, but I recommend a conversation on that. I think it would be well worth it if you subside and protect.
Kind of randomly does it by itself.
It sounds good.
Other than that, this looks good.
Other questions, comments, concerns?
I guess a decrease in the budget is due to the decrease in electrical costs for the solid towns, I guess, in the whole program.
Um, in terms of electricity, we're, obviously, we're not charging as much to this account. And the other big, the larger portion of the decrease is the fact of we not having the one-time expense for the live stream.
Okay.
Yeah, we're still, I would say on the electricity side, we're still on a little bit of a learning curve in terms of what's generated. Cause if we, even if we don't use any electricity, if we're generating electricity, we're paying them. Because that's what our power purchase agreement says. And we switched to, uh, what's called the cascade system, maybe we, do we talk? And we switched to, uh, what's called the cascade system, maybe we, did we talk about this last year, budget time?
No.
Which be, before we had to assign, we could allocate so much percentage to this building and so much to the fire station, so much to San Sal, so much to the pier. And then, um, we were allowed to change to what's called a cascade system where we say, take it in this order. So, they chart, so CMP takes, if the fires, I think the fire station's number one on the list, has to be, cause that's where our thing is located. So, the fire department's always gonna have a zero bill from CMP. And until we run, we get, so we, we create a bank during the summer, when the sun's shining, and then we can draw on that for the darker times of year. Um, but we still are internally allocating this to town office and fire, so we kind of, we get one bill from revision saying you owe three thousand dollars. Well, that might be an exaggeration.
That's about three thousand a quarter.
But then we, we allocate that three thousand dollars to the various different places we have electricity.
And if we consume more electricity than our PV system generates, we, we pay for that excess use.
Yeah, if, if for some reason our bank of power went to zero, then we pay for the, whatever the standard offer is for electricity.
And I, I know it's relatively new, but I was just backtracked on the fire department, we are allocating a few, almost three thousand dollar electricity. Okay, that's the price that we're gonna pay revision, alright.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When we hopefully get the panels and, and own them.
Then that's a different conversation, yeah.
Right. When we, yeah, when we get the, if we get.
I'm jumping ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if, a couple of years from now, we get to the point where we actually own the panels, then I would anticipate a substantial reduction in electricity that we have scattered throughout the budget. We'll still have the basic meter charge for all the locations and we'll probably have, well, by that point, we'll have a better track record and we'll know a little more, but. Uh, we may have some charges to somewhere, so that if we have, if the bank ever goes to zero, we'll be able to pay for electricity.
I think Kayla, you told me come May, or last May, was when we started the cascade system, right?
Yes.
So, this May will be a full year on the cascade, which is, that's good.
Correct, cause last.
And then we can see if we're buying more electricity than we're using. And if we are, then it will even be better, we'll get even more savings by buying the panels. Yeah, cause we hadn't figured that in, we did our calculations.
Yeah, cause right, as of right now, I think we are looking at making more than what we're gonna use. Last year, and it was about January, February, and March, some of our locations had to buy electricity because we didn't have a high enough percentage allocated to them. But other locations were banking the electricity.
So, you kind of redistributed it.
So now, with the cascade, we have one bank and they all waterfall out of it. So, it, we don't run into that situation where one has more than the other. It just becomes difficult when I put that bill into each location, cause if we're not using it all, then who gets the extra, so we try to split it up evenly and.
Mm-hmm. The other part of that is we were, uh, when that system was initially sized, and John was involved in this, I think we used a ninety percent.
Yep.
Sized it based on ninety percent of our usage, and I don't think we're using as much, which is good. And we've been fortunate to have two sunnier than predicted years, or it's generated more electricity than they anticipated, which is good on one hand, except we have to pay for it, so.
So, uh, after we get one year under development with the cascade system, and if we really see that we're not using all of the electricity, LED streetlights are coming in. So, if we see that, then maybe next year, we would consider putting a heat pump in at the beach fire station. So you'd save on heating oil and you'd use up the extra electricity maybe. And then if we build a new fire station, you just take the heat pump out and put it on a new building, so it's not like you're tossing it out, so.
Either that or we leave the lights on all the time.
I think the school does that.
Well, I was just gonna throw in too, that, that the cascading thing was something that it wa- it was the law of the land for a while, and then CMP took it away. So like, the year that we got, I assume you're probably familiar with that, they took it away, cause I, I had to call, that we have some panels up at our house and a couple of properties, and it was like, well, if you don't use it all there, then it'll automatically. And then they took that away, so you had to assign it to where, and we got screwed by that too. And then John Luft and the people at revision and a bunch of the whole solar community was, really went to town again, you know, with the state to try to. Get the cascade thing back, cause it was, you know, CMP was doing that on purpose to.
Get free electricity.
Yeah, to get free electricity out of, out of the people that were producing it, so, yeah, so then, then it came back, so I guess now it's back.
That's why we switched to it, we.
Yeah.
And it was right during their billing issue.
Fiasco.
So, we, when we tried to switch to it, it got delayed, cause there wasn't a person able to, so I, I had to call, we called multiple times.
Yeah, yeah.
It's all good now.
We're there.
Glad you're there. So that's great that the, that, uh, was, yeah, we'll see, I didn't know that was not factored in originally, so.
Yeah.
That's cool.
Okay, any other town office building questions, comments, or concerns? Uh, contingency, just that. Monies for unforeseen, things that pop up in the course of the year, and that gives the selectmen the ability to. Pay something, do something without having to hold a special town meeting to transfer a small amount of money, even though sometimes we do.
Small percentage of your overall budget, what's typically for a town, what percentage do people usually like for a contingency budget?
Um, I would say we're on the low side.
It looked, that's what I was saying, it looks kind of with.
I think if you, but if you go to some towns, they don't have one. Plain and flat, no, zero. Uh, or they built in little ones throughout the budget. Um, if. If you go to a, how do I say this nicely, a more mature town, in my opinion, in your fiscal policy, they would have a contingency. I have a contingency fund for my own personal life, most of us have some sort of, hopefully, try to have some sort of, you know, fund for unforeseen. Um, I think we're on the low side, but we also don't seem to utilize it a lot, which is good too. So I wouldn't advocate for it to be higher.
What's in there now, like, total, like, in the contingency?
Oh, well, ev- what.
Just whatever we didn't spend from.
No, what we have in there this year is, we started with ten thousand dollars, we've expended fourteen hundred and ninety dollars thus far. Um, at the end of the year, on all of these accounts, but at the end of the year on this one, unless the voters choose to carry it forward to another year, it rolls into unassigned fund balance.
Oh, okay.
And then we'll have an, we'll talk about later tonight in revenues and offsets, we take money out of unassigned fund balance to reduce taxes every year.
Ah.
So it's, we ask for ten, if we don't spend it all, it goes into, comes out of the right pocket, goes into the left, and then when we go to do. Taxes for next year, we take it out of the left and put it back in the right.
Well, okay, so it's not carried over year to year, it's only zeroed out one way or the other.
No, we're not building up a big fund.
Right, yeah.
It's a one-time appropriation that lapses at the end of the year.
Previous boards have in more stressful budget seasons lowered the contingency to.
It's a philosophical thing amongst the select boards, and boards come and boards go, I think when, let's pu- I'll put this in perspective. When I started here fifteen years ago, we had a ten thousand dollar contingency. And I don't think it ever went above ten, but it's been, we might've got down to, I know we were down to six or eight at one point, we might've got to five, but I don't.
Not, I think six, well, that was quite a while ago though.
And it's never been fully expended?
No.
Okay.
It's unpredictable, I mean, eighteen, it looks like you spent almost six thousand last year, you're fifteen hundred dollars, so.
The previous, previous year, it was less than a hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
So, I mean.
But you nev-
You never know.
Yeah, really?
And the, and.
That's why it's called the contingency.
You know, it kinda keeps you, if you have a low contingency, you're more reluctant to maybe spend that than if you have a larger contingency, oh, what'd you put in a contingency?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we, we attempt throughout the budget to predict what we're gonna have in the upcoming year. Um, I've probably said this here, but in this room before, my crystal ball for eighteen months from now i- is fuzzy. And things are gonna come up, and if they do, it's available to the board. If you don't trust the board with ten thousand dollars, time for a new boy.
You've got bigger problems, yeah?
Yeah.
You can always go to the town and call me if something big comes.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if it, if we had a catastrophe, uh, that, yeah, that insurance or something isn't gonna cover. If we had a major storm event and, you know, roads washed out everywhere, we're gonna go around and fix the roads, and we're going back to town meeting and say, we need more money. But if we lost, that may not be the best example, but if we lost a couple of roads and we needed an extra five thousand dollars, there it is.
We used it, we got a grant for the DOT signboard, that smaller one we have, and it didn't cover the full board, we had to pay, I think, one thousand five hundred or so of it. And we used the contingency for that, cause it, we found out about it after we had budgeted, and we didn't wanna lose out on the grant money we were going to get.
That wasn't from DOT though.
Oh, well.
DOT, we got a, DOT, we got a free one, we just got a free new signboard, that was a different program, but it, that, thank you, that was a good example, cause I couldn't think of what we wanted to spend that money on.
That was the Walden County, sorry. That was the Walden County.
Any other contingency questions? Uh, on to code enforcement, page thirteen, we have a part-time code enforcement officer who also serves as the local plumbing inspector, building inspector and health officer. And addressing officer for that, or addressing official for that matter. Um, we have, we don't have, but we have funds for an alternate, we don't currently have one. Uh, should the CEO be gone and we need, it used to be more frequent for the plumbing inspector position. Um, professional development, he's required to have, uh, certifications and we need to keep up with training in order to keep those certifications. Uh, memberships, publications, equipment purchases, and water monitoring, should he need to take example. Seeing none, I'll flip the page to assessing, we have an assessor's agent that assists the board of assessors in, um, tracking and sales and split, property splits and doing a lot of the paperwork. Um, he has requested a one point six percent change or six hundred dollar change in his contract for the coming year. Uh, it's been five years or six years since we, he's had an adjustment to that. Uh, we also provide him the ability to access our system remotely. Um, and we've carried three hundred and ninety-six dollars, cause that's what our IT consultant had suggested for software.
Um, so, the software went up, just because prices went up.
Um, I don't, we, we've used a remote software program that our IT consultant would prefer we use something different, I don't know if it's more secure or whatever else. But we had a conversation with Jim, he said, you ought to be budgeting for this instead of that. I think we'll still look for a less expensive alternative, but. Uh, that's why.
Can we go actually back to the code enforcement?
Sure.
I just had a question about, uh, so his wages went up four point eight percent, and I'd.
It's two point eight percent plus the fifty-third week, which adds another, another two percent to it.
Oh, sorry. Right, okay.
And it does, under the, under the wage thing, does say fifty-third payday concluded, but that's a good question. Anybody have any more CEO or assessing questions? Goodness. We are so far ahead.
Wow.
We're now going to page twenty-seven. Top of page twenty-seven is our total of all the previous pages, um, expense requests, and then the revenue budget offsets. Excuse me again, um, revenue and budget offsets is monies from non-property tax sources. That we use to reduce what we're gonna, um, assess to the property taxpayers of town. Uh, boat excise tax, so if you register a boat, you pay an excise tax, and we're seeking to keep that the same at five thousand dollars. You may look and say, gee, there's not much money in boat excise tax, well, most people registered their boats in the spring of the year. So that's, that's our end-loaded revenue to us. Uh, vehicle excise, if you register your, uh, motor vehicle here, um, the excise tax stays locally. Uh, local road assistance comes through us from the state of Maine, it's a pers- the total pun- uh, the total amount statewide is a percentage of the highway budget. And then that's distributed to towns individually based on the mileage of road, public roads you have. Um, we don't know what that amount will be, this, as you probably hear, the state is in the middle of, or just starting their budget procedure. Uh, we budgeted the same amount for the coming year as what we received in this year. Um, early indications are, in the governor's budget, there's a slight increase, but until that budget is actually approved, your guess is as good as mine. Uh, fund balance, this is where, John, you asked a question earlier, contingency, if we don't spend, where's it go? Uh, fund balance, um, is monies we don't spend, um, revenues that come in that are in excess of what we anticipate. Just goes into fund balance, we appropriate from that on an annual basis, typically on an annual basis. We, the board has the policy, um, that Lynnwood was explaining the other night when he was here, um, of a certain percentage. And that we'd like to maintain in the fund balance, and if we expend four hundred thousand from that, we will still have that policy or greater. Uh, municipal revenue sharing, this is up substantially or appears to be up substantially, we ta- or I talked a little bit about this last night. A number of years ago, it was proposed to eliminate that program, um, so we budgeted zero, turns out it wasn't eliminated, and we received, I don't remember exactly what we received that year, but. Round numbers, ninety thousand dollars. We've been lagging, a year behind, we've been, um, appropriating what we'd actually received the year prior. Uh, the auditors suggested to us that we don't do that anymore, and that we add last year's, yeah, last year's amount, which we would've had in here anyhow. Plus this year's projected amount to the budget, so that's what we've done. Um, the state is in the process in their, in their budget of, um, they'll set what percentage of revenue sharing will come to the towns. Governor's budget included a little bit more money, um, cautiously optimistic that that'll occur, but I'm not carrying it in the draft budget because until they decide what they're doing in Augusta, I hate to be at their whim. And harbor fees and donations, um, we receive more than ten thousand dollars in harbor fees and donations, but we budget to receive ten thousand dollars and use that to help offset. Costs that we've appropriated for the pier or the harbor. There, did I talk fast enough tonight, ran through it?
John?
We should've stayed for another hour and a, ten minutes last night. Maybe, maybe next year. If anybody, um, that concludes pretty much what I have to say, unless somebody has some questions, but certainly, uh, if you have questions, like I said last night, and you go through this and you want some additional information. Feel free to get us those questions, we'll do a best to get you an answer. Um, right now, I would anticipate that at the next selectman's meeting, they'll have a chance for public comment on the draft budget, and then. Then they'll have another item for board deliberations and start to add and subtract as they see fit. Again, the goal is, is established by the town charters for the selectmen to conclude their budget recommendations in March, and then follow along to the budget committee, so you can do yours. and then follow along to the budget committee, so you can do yours. And we'll spend time going through this again, um, with budget committee and certainly hit the highlights of what changed from what was requested to what was recommended by the selectmen. And then any other issues you wanna chit chat at that time?
Any other questions, comments, concerns at this particular point in time?
I, I just wanna say, uh, thank you, I think you did a great job presenting the budget and, uh, very, I, I, I like the format. I think it's very nice and I love the way you explain different key points to the budget. So I know that it takes a lot of work to do this and I certainly appreciate it.
It does, I bet. Fortunately, we've got a lot of people that feed good information to us to make us look good when we're feeding it to you, so.
Still have to put it together.
It, yes, Kayla does.
Oh, you do your share too.
Thank you, and.
Do we have a final motion?
I move we adjourn.
Move seconded, all those in favor? Thank you very much.